We have an issue for really the SSVC to wrap up. They have to approve their, the minutes of their last meeting. So I will hand the mic over to Dr. Friedel. And then after that, Dr. Friedel will start the presentation to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Hawley. We have minutes from our meeting of September 27th that I believe have been distributed. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Thank you. Before I begin, I will try and speak loud into the microphone, but if you can't hear me, will you make some noise in the back of the room and I will do my best to speak even more clearly and loudly. I am speaking to the town council, but I'm also cognizant of the fact that we have a large audience and you are all here because you want to hear what we have to say. So I'm not ignoring you, but if you can't hear me, let me know and I'll do my best to speak up. Members of the council, last January, you asked us to evaluate the viability of a separate school system. And for the next eight months, we gathered data from many sources that included a trip to Shelby County where we met with five of the six school superintendents from districts that separated from the Shelby County system. We have also engaged in consultation with state and local agencies and gathered data from many sources. You also asked us to identify obstacles to the possible creation of a separate school district and where we identified obstacles, if possible, to identify ways to overcome them. What you didn't ask for was a recommendation as to whether the town should pursue this option, and we have not provided you with a recommendation one way or the other. We have concluded that an independent school system would be viable. We have identified three main obstacles to the possibility of creating a separate school district, and we have identified ways to overcome those obstacles should the town choose to do so. Six members of the committee agreed with these conclusions; one did not. I will present tonight our findings and only briefly respond to the dissent, but leave a more complete response to the question period if you choose to pursue it. The threshold issue for the committee was whether an independent municipal school district would lead to improvement in the quality of education. If we could not determine that quality would be improved, then it didn't matter whether it was viable. We have concluded that quality would improve, and that conclusion is based on several different sources of data. Not only would a locally elected school board make decisions to address local issues and local concerns, they would also have the resources available to carry out those decisions. First of all, Signal Mountain schools are presently not operating with sufficient funds from Hamilton County Department of Education to offer a quality education at the level that is possible. In 2016, the Mountain Education Fund contributed $343,000 to pay for extra teachers, classroom equipment, professional development for teachers, guidance counselor for students, and much, much more. In addition, parents of children in Signal Mountain schools contributed approximately $300,000 in extra supply fees to cover basic supplies like paper, ink cartridges, art supplies, music, and much more. The Mountain Education Funds that are contributed to the public schools in Signal Mountain are the result of fundraising by the foundation. And it is important to note that despite their best efforts, the Mountain Education Fund has experienced a decline in revenues. That decline over the past five years is 28 percent. So we need to ask whether a future trend of decline in Mountain Education Fund support would have a detrimental effect on the current quality of Signal Mountain schools, not to mention the future. We have determined that these costs, approximately $650,000 in contributions outside the funding of Hamilton County Department of Education, we have determined that these costs could be covered by the recurring annual budget of an independent municipal school district, thereby ensuring that they would be available in the future. Second, as a source of data for determining improvements in quality, we conducted a survey of parents, teachers, and concerned citizens. We received 738 responses that identified many desired improvements to the quality of education in the schools. I should point out that it is not the role of our committee to recommend which improvements should be adopted, but I think a future school board, should one be constituted, would have much to work with. Just to give you one example, the item that received the greatest concern from parents in our survey was the starting time at the Signal Mountain Middle High School, currently 7:25 in the morning. More than 100 respondents mentioned that that was a concern and that it had a detrimental effect on the quality of education of their children. We have determined that an independent municipal school district budget would be, would have funds available to pay for additional buses, which would allow a later starting time at that school. A third source of information regarding quality came from our discussions with the superintendents in five of the six Shelby County school districts that separated from the county system. In each case, the superintendents cited specific improvements in quality of education that were achieved after separation from the larger county system. Again, I don't want to go into great detail on this, but just as an example, I will cite you, refer you to pages 13 and 14 of our report for a discussion of just one example cited by the superintendent of the Germantown Schools, a lengthy list of all of the improvements that they were able to make there. So the conclusion in terms of quality of education is that we are confident that there could be significant improvements in the quality of education under an independent municipal school district that are not possible with the current administration under the Hamilton County Department of Education. The primary issue, of course, is financial. Hamilton County cannot afford to pay the cost of these improvements. They can't even afford to pay the cost of basic classroom supplies, which is why the schools have to charge parents a supply fee. And even if there was a desire to do so, I think we all have to recognize that Signal Mountain schools are a pretty low priority in the county system right now for what should be obvious reasons. Okay, so assuming that we can improve the quality of education, the next question is, what would it cost? Can we afford it? The committee conducted painstaking, detailed research on the budget to ensure that every line item was accurate and complete. Amy Joakim, who led this discussion and this investigation, is going to go over it when I'm finished. She's going to go over that in more detail. Let me just make a couple of very brief comments. We concluded that the budget would initially generate a surplus of $1.9 million. If part of that surplus was used to cover the expenses currently paid for by Mountain Education Fund donations and parent supply fees, there would still be a surplus of approximately $1.25 million available for other improvements. This budget was reviewed and praised by the Chief Financial Officer of the Tennessee Department of Education and also reviewed and approved by the Hamilton County Department of Education Chief Financial Officer. Our budget also includes a risk analysis. I know that Mr. Spencer in his dissent claims that we did not adequately consider risk. Our budget in Exhibit B includes a risk analysis. The difference between our budget, our risk analysis, I'm sorry, and his risk analysis is that ours is based on actual data and historical facts. We have a 10-year projection of what the budget would look like that uses variables that are reasonable and conservative based on past experience. We based our projection on enrollments derived from historical census data and projections of census data by the Haslam College of Business, which did a study of census projections. We based inflation on historical trends. Mr. Spencer's statement that he arrived at a $300,000 deficit is based on numbers that he pulled from thin air and did not present to the committee for review. He ignores the fact that a school board would have the flexibility to increase enrollment by adjusting its attendance policy to attract students from out of district. And more importantly, he ignores the fact that before a school district is permitted to begin operation, it must be, have a plan approved by the Commissioner of Education in the Tennessee Department of Education. That plan must include a budget. The Commissioner will not, will not approve a budget that includes a $300,000 deficit. Let me briefly touch on a few other issues and then move on to talk about the obstacles that we identified. One issue that we were concerned with when we began our investigation was the buildings. We have three school buildings on Signal Mountain. We believe that there is adequate space for enrollment of all children living on the mountain for the near term, and we believe that there is an opportunity to expand the space in the middle high school when needed over the long term. Building conditions are basically very good. Thrasher has some deferred maintenance, but given the current state of affairs in Hamilton County, ask yourself whether Thrasher's deferred maintenance is more likely to be resolved by a local school district or by the Hamilton County Department of Education. Second issue, teachers and staff. There's been a lot of buzz on social media about what will happen to teachers and staff. All employees in the Signal Mountain schools can be hired. They do not need to apply for employment. They can be hired by a letter of intent. This was the process that was used in Shelby County in all six districts. We were informed that offers were made to 100 percent of the employees in those districts and that in most cases, almost all of the employees accepted the letter of intent. Teachers are hired with their current tenure status. A tenured teacher retains his or her tenure and seniority for all employees, teachers and staff. The transfer can be made seamless. State law requires that at least the same salary and benefits must be paid to all employees transitioning to an independent municipal school district, and our budget provides for the continuation of all benefits, retention bonuses for teachers and administrators, and sufficient funds to, to continue or improve health insurance for all employees. A third issue that came to our attention was concern about the International Baccalaureate Program. That program will be continued under an independent municipal school district. It does not need to be recertified, and there is sufficient funding in our projected budget to match or increase the cost of operating the IB program. A fourth issue that was raised in some of the questions that we received has to do with busing. Our budget projects that all students living on Signal Mountain in Hamilton County would continue to, to be bused to the schools that they attend on the mountain, and we also project that there would be sufficient funding to add the buses necessary to increase, to postpone the starting time at the middle high school to something later than 7:25 in the morning. The reason that the early starting time is necessary at the present is that the Hamilton County Department of Education does not have sufficient funds to provide the extra buses, and they need to use some buses for more than one school, so they have to have staggered starting times. A fifth concern that was raised has to do with the Hamilton County Department of Education Magnet Schools. Currently, 71 students who live on Signal Mountain in the county attend magnet schools off the mountain. The concern is, will they be able to continue to attend those schools? Current Hamilton County Department of Education policy allows all county residents to apply to attend magnet schools. There was a comment made at the September 7th Public Forum about whether Hamilton County might want to change their policy if Signal Mountain had an independent school district. I can't speak to whether the county would take such action that would clearly harm Signal Mountain students. I would point out that Signal Mountain residents pay county taxes, which go to support those schools. More importantly, Hamilton County Department of Education, if it chose to exclude Signal Mountain students from the magnet schools, would lose approximately $560,000 annually in revenue. A final issue that was raised, and it was a concern of many parents, has to do with special education. Special education is an important issue that we addressed. It is something that is mandated both by state and federal law, and we have projected in our budget for an independent school district, should it be formed, that special education services will continue at least at the same level and possibly with greater funding than they currently have. Okay, let me now move to the obstacles that we have identified. First is the question of who controls the three school buildings. When it was first announced that Signal Mountain was considering the possibility of establishing a separate school district, the attorney representing the Hamilton County Department of Education sent an email to the Signal Mountain attorney asserting that the Department of Education in Hamilton County would sell or repurpose the three buildings and not allow a Signal Mountain school district to use them. There is a strong legal argument that Hamilton County Department of Education does not own these three buildings in the conventional sense of ownership, but rather it holds them in trust for the public. If a new school district were to be created, the public trust would move to the new district, and there is case law in Tennessee to that effect. The ownership would then transfer to the new school board. Mr. Bennett, the attorney for HCD, he has also cited a 2005 interlocal agreement stating that ownership resides with the Hamilton County Department of Education. He represents his client, that's his interpretation. That agreement is open to other interpretations. It is not my role here to make legal arguments. If Hamilton County Department of Education continues to assert sole right to control these buildings, this issue may need to be resolved in court if it cannot be resolved through negotiation. A second issue, obstacle, is how to include the participation of students and families from Walden and from the unincorporated areas of Hamilton County on the mountain. The school district presently is comprised of students primarily from Signal Mountain, Walden, and unincorporated Hamilton County, and there was never an intention in our investigation to consider the creation of a school district that did not include those three counties, those three communities in the schools. Ideally, the residents of all three communities would elect members to the school board and would participate to some extent in the financial support of the schools. The obstacle is that at present, Tennessee law permits a school district to be formed by a municipality, but not by more than one municipality. A school district is restricted to a single municipality. So there is one possible solution to the problem, to the obstacle, and that is to seek an amendment to the state law to permit one or more contiguous jurisdictions to combine to create an independent municipal school district. This is clearly a possibility, but it is one that we have not investigated. It was beyond the scope of our mission, and I have not had discussions with state legislators as to whether they would be receptive to a change in the law, but it's a possibility. Another, more likely and much easier solution would be to enter into an agreement between the three communities to allow for representation on a school board and to provide for cooperative financial support. So the Signal Mountain Town Council, the Walden Board of Aldermen, and the Hamilton County Commission on behalf of the unincorporated areas could enter into what we would call an interlocal agreement. Now, it was a newspaper article in the Monday Times Free Press that said that the Hamilton County Commission might not want to enter into such an agreement. After reading that article, I gave it a lot of thought, and I ask you to consider what might happen in that case. Let's say that Signal Mountain and Walden entered into an interlocal agreement that provided for guaranteed attendance by residents of Walden, by the children of Walden residents, guaranteed representation on the school board, and a financial contribution from the town of Walden based on the percentage of students who attend from Walden. Currently, that's somewhere around 11, 11 percent of the Signal Mountain school enrollment. So you have a school district that consists of Walden and Signal Mountain. Walden is represented on the board. Walden has guaranteed enrollment in perpetuity. What does that leave the Hamilton County Commission? Hamilton County unincorporated area residents would be allowed to attend Signal Mountain schools as long as there was room, as long as the, we, the schools were not over capacity, but they would not be guaranteed enrollment. Hamilton County residents outside of Walden and Signal Mountain would not be able to elect members to the school board. Instead of making a financial contribution on behalf of those residents, the school board could choose to charge a non-resident, a non-district user fee to cover the cost of busing if we provided buses, which I assume would continue. Unincorporated area students, however, because they were out of district, would be the responsibility of the Hamilton County Department of Education, and if they chose to attend schools outside of Signal Mountain, to go to Red Bank, for example, HCD would have to send buses up the mountain and take them back and forth to school. So it seems to me that it would be a lose-lose situation for HCD, for the Hamilton County Commission, and for the families who live in the unincorporated areas of Signal Mountain. Whether that would be an inducement, an incentive for the Hamilton County Commission to join with Walden and Signal Mountain in an interlocal agreement is above my pay grade. I can't tell you, but it can work with the cooperation of Signal Mountain and Walden and does not require Hamilton County Commission buy-in. A third obstacle that we addressed was the required financial contribution of the town of Signal Mountain. State policy says that when an independent municipal school district is established, the municipality is required to make a financial contribution in an amount equal to 15 cents per hundred dollars of assessed property value. That doesn't mean that a tax has to be imposed. It simply is a way of calculating the amount of the required contribution. Based on the 2017 reassessment, that amount for the town of Signal Mountain is approximately If Walden and unincorporated Hamilton County participated in a joint agreement, some of that $438,000 could be offset or shared by contributions from those two communities as well, based on presumably the proportion of students who, who reside in those areas. It should also be noted that Signal Mountain could contribute in-kind values such as shared staff, rent-free use of town property, payment for a school resource officer, and any other in-kind contributions that the town council might identify. Here again, I just want to note, Mr. Spencer mentioned in his dissent, quoted in the -- Here again, I just want to note, Mr. Spencer mentioned in his dissent quoted in the newspaper on Monday that this is a risk to an independent municipal school district, that the school board would be presented with in-kind contributions that it didn't want and it didn't need, and therefore the value would be depreciated. This assumes that the town council would, without consulting with the school board and without taking into account their needs and their desires, would determine what the schools needed and essentially cram it down the throat of the school board, and I hardly think that qualifies as a risk. Perhaps Mr. Spencer disagrees. I think the council would have to consider various options for meeting this $438,000 If there was a decision made to impose a school tax, a property tax, to support the schools, it would be a modest tax increase on a house that is assessed at $400,000 in market value, and assessments are typically below market value, but at a house assessed at $400,000, the increase in tax would be $150. The town could also consider a sales tax increase and any other possibilities that are beyond the scope of our investigation. One last point that I want to go over, it's not an obstacle, but it is a concern that we considered as a potential obstacle and determined that it would not be, and that is the concern about the effect on Hamilton County schools if Signal Mountain were to withdraw and establish a separate municipal school district. Hamilton County Department of Education would lose $19 million in revenue. It would also reduce its operating costs by $19 million. It would not have to pay for teachers, textbooks, building maintenance, buses, insurance, or any of the other items that you will find in Exhibit A, the budget, to our projected school district. Hamilton County Department of Education would receive the same per pupil revenue for all remaining students in the Hamilton County School District that it currently receives. In fact, the per pupil revenue is likely to increase very slightly due to the fact that there are a higher number, a higher proportion of low-income students in Hamilton County, and the funding for those students is higher than the average. So the benefit to Signal Mountain schools does not come from taking away money from Hamilton County, but from reallocating the funds that would be received to different uses. Signal Mountain schools would also benefit from additional funds from the town contribution, but parents would no longer have to pay supply fees, and the Mountain Education Fund contributions could go toward enhancements currently not available in the Signal Mountain schools. That concludes my presentation. I am now going to ask Amy Joakim to walk you through the budget.
Thank you, Dr. Friedel.
You're fine.
All right, thank you, Dr. Friedel. First, yes, I'll be talking about Exhibit A, which is the budget document.
I can't hear you.
No, I'll do my best. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for your time reviewing the committee's report and for your time this evening as we discuss our research findings. I'd also like to thank you for the opportunity that I've had to serve on this committee alongside the other six members who have all served very willingly, diligently, and professionally throughout this process. It's been a pleasure working with all of you. I'd like to begin by going over the process that we used when we were creating the budget. Each light item throughout the budget was researched, analyzed, and discussed during countless hours of budget subcommittee meetings over the past several months. All revenue and expense items presented in this budget have been documented and sourced by this committee to ensure accuracy regarding the information that has been presented to the council. When multiple data sources for revenues or expenditures were presented to the budget subcommittee for consideration, the committee would typically select the most conservative estimates to ensure that revenues were not overestimated and expenses were adequately covered. For vetting and auditing purposes, the budget contents and methodology were reviewed by both the Tennessee Department of Education as well as the Hamilton County's Director of Finance. I would like to emphasize the SSVC's appreciation for their time reviewing and discussing the budget documents. Their constructive comments to the committee were carefully considered and incorporated into this final report. Going over the revenue side of the budget, Tennessee law specifically dictates how funds are allocated to municipal districts from state and county sources. State and county funding represents the majority of the revenue funding for municipal districts, and this can be seen visually on page A4 of Exhibit A. You can see that the state and county funding represents, it's actually over 95% of total funding. The required municipal contribution and non-residence fees would represent a very small portion of the total district revenue, and the combination of those two is just around 5%. While the municipal contribution requirements are dictated by state law, implementing a non-residence fee is ultimately up to a school board to decide, and also if an inter-local agreement is reached with the other entities, it may not be needed. When developing the budget, it was assumed that faculty, children, and economically disadvantaged students would not pay this non-residence fee. The total revenue for the budget in consideration is approximately $20.7 million. It just illustrates where the majority of the funding is coming from. Considering for the expenses, two expense scenarios were considered for comparison purposes. The first was a Hamilton County equivalent budget. This model represents the expenses that a Signal Mountain School District would incur to duplicate Hamilton County's current level of spending for Signal Mountain schools. The second consideration was what would the budget look like for a Hamilton County equivalent budget that covered expenses currently paid for by MEF and supply fees. So this model represents all of the expenses from Scenario 1, plus it covers all of the expenses that the Mountain Education Foundation funds, and in addition to the expenses that the general education supply fees currently cover. Regular instruction and exceptional education instruction were the two largest expense categories, representing teacher salaries, benefits, contracted services, and supplies for each of these categories. And you can see that on the following page where it's broken down in a pie chart, A5. The SSVC incorporated the costs for exceptional education services for both on and off the mountain, including those services that are provided by Siskin, Orange Grove, and the Dawn School. The SSVC asked Hamilton County as many questions as possible regarding the costs for exceptional education services and busing, and busing for those services, to ensure that those costs were accounted for in the budgeting process. School-specific salaries and benefits were pulled directly from the Hamilton County budget and allocated throughout the appropriate budget expense categories. Additional salary information was provided in responses by Hamilton County for positions that were not specifically listed in the budget on a school-by-school basis. In Memphis, we learned that the municipal lawyers recommended taking all teachers, including their tenure status, during the transition to an independent district. The teachers merely had to sign a letter of intent whether or not they planned to stay at their current school. Then their employee records were transferred from the county to the municipality to create a seamless transfer from one employer to another. Therefore, in the budgeting process, all current teaching positions and salaries were accounted for in this budget by pulling salary information directly from the Hamilton County budget. Tennessee law states that teachers cannot be harmed in a municipal split from a parent district. This is in reference to their salary, sick leave, benefits, and retirement. Sick leave, retirement, and tenure would transfer to the new district. And by law, salary and benefits must meet or exceed the parent district. And to ensure the health benefits would not be diminished, SSVC looked at the cost per employee of municipal school districts in Shelby County and other schools, in other small districts across Tennessee. Most of these districts budgeted their per-employee health benefits at around $7,000 per employee. We also looked at the cost per employee in Hamilton County, which budgets their health benefits at approximately $9,500 per employee. The SSVC budgeted $10,590 per employee, which is more than $1,000 more per employee, to ensure the employee health benefits would not be diminished by the smaller system. Hamilton County's non-school-specific expenses were either allocated based on direct responses provided by Hamilton County or were allocated to Signal Mountain on a pro-rata percent ADEA basis if no response was provided. This was consistent with the Southern Educational Strategy Studies that we looked at during this investigation. The superintendents of the Memphis Municipal School Districts reported that this method of budgeting funds on a pro-rata basis proved to be an accurate method of estimating a year-one budget when compared to actual expenses after the first year. The Signal Mountain Central Office staffing structure was designed and budgeted to accommodate a small district. The structure was designed based on Tom McCullough's experience as a superintendent for a small school district, and was compared to districts of similar size across Tennessee to ensure the committee provided a realistic central office structure with adequate staffing. The central office structure and staffing was reviewed by both the Tennessee Department of Education and the Hamilton County Finance Director. The structure was approved by the Tennessee Department of Education, and adjustments were made per the recommendations by Hamilton County. In addition to all current Signal Mountain School-related expenses, the following items were added to the budget for the scenario that included MEF and supply fees. MEF covers many basics, such as funding for professional development and substitutes to cover the classrooms during, when the teachers are receiving their training. MEF covers basic staffing positions such as art, technology, a full-time college advisor, plus math and reading interventionists, and several more. MEF also covers art, PE, and classroom supplies. They also cover additional technology funding, and these are all listed on page A3 of Exhibit A, that lists everything that MEF currently provides and the amounts that are allocated General education supply fees cover supplies and expenses that are not currently covered by Hamilton County, and we learned that some of these expenses include copier leases and paper supplies. So by covering expenses currently paid for by MEF and the community through supply fees, private fundraising efforts could be used to pay for educational excellence initiatives rather than some of these basics that are not currently covered by the school system. It was assumed that any remaining difference between the revenue and expenses would be used at the discretion of the school board for both future education, capital projects, and to enhance and improve the level and quality of education within the Signal Mountain School District. While the SSVC made a list of potential uses for these additional funds, we noted that all funding decisions would ultimately be up to a school board and not the SSVC to It was the conclusion of the SSVC that the budget presented was an accurate estimate for a year-one general-purpose school fund operating budget. It was also the conclusion that based on this estimate, revenues would exceed expenses in year-one scenario, providing a budget surplus or flexibility of between $1.25 and $1.9 million, and that's between the two different scenarios we looked at, giving a future school board both cushion and flexibility in their budgeting decisions. Furthermore, it was concluded that there was adequate surplus and flexibility in the first year to cover the first-year startup expenses that are listed on the budget summary page A9 to start a municipal district. The committee also looked ahead to ensure that funding sources would continue to cover the school, excuse me, the school district expenses in future years. Both five- and 10-year projections were considered using five different population growth scenarios, with revenue and expense increases considered based on both historical trends as well as inflationary pressures. This risk analysis for future considerations created a matrix of scenarios and results driven by research-based data for population growth as well as documented revenue and expense increases over time. It was also the conclusion of this committee that there would be adequate funding from future revenue sources to operate and maintain the expenses incurred by municipal school district for the future years considered in these projections. In summary, all revenue and expense items presented in this budget have been documented and sourced by this committee to ensure accuracy regarding the information that has been presented to the council. The budget findings showed that there will be sufficient revenue primarily from county and state funding sources to cover the school district expenses for year one, as well as considering the five- and 10-year projection scenarios. Again, I'd like to say, just thank the council for your time as we continue to discuss our research findings.
I want to give, I'd like to give the opportunity, I'd like to give the opportunity for anybody else on the SSVC to chime in and add thoughts or opinions or, Tom? Charlie?
Susan? Okay. Again, I don't think we can thank you enough for the time and effort that you had, that you've put into this. I don't think it's a bad thing that there was dissenting opinion, and I think that dissenting opinion needs to be looked at seriously, because very smart people can come to very different conclusions. So I think we need to take that all into consideration as we move forward. I want to thank you for your effort. It was countless hours. It was travel. It was even to the point where people may be taking potshots at you here and there, and I apologize. You guys were tasked with the duty to specifically look at the viability, and if you run into obstacles, how do they go around? And you were specifically not asked for a recommendation, and the reason being is because if we didn't, the first obstacle we hit, we throw up our hands and stop this process. And I think it's been, in my opinion, very educational, and I think, again, as long as we're all focused on the quality of education of the students and improving that quality, that we'll come to a good conclusion. So I want to thank you again. What I want to do now is open up for the council to ask you questions on the report. I know I have several, but I'd like to give my colleagues a chance to go first. Bob, would you like to start us off?
Sure. On the A9, you have the grand total revenue of $20,695, and the per-student basis was $8,517. How does that compare with the existing? Sure, I'm Robert Spalding, I'm a councilperson for Signal Mountain. Were you able to, on the, on your projection here, it was $8,517. How does that compare with the existing figure that follows the student with the current budget for Hamilton County education? County education?
Just to paraphrase, you're asking, on the projected budget, our budget projects $8,517 spent per student, or received per student, and you're asking what is the current amount received for students?
Hamilton County Department of Education budget is $363 million with a little over 43,000 students, and it's about $8,430 per student. So it is approximately $240. The money that would come to Signal Mountain is about $240 per student less than that, but Signal Mountain would make up that difference by charging, by the municipal contribution. Plus, what we haven't mentioned is that there are about 40 students who live in Suquatchee County who attend Signal Mountain schools, who live on the mountain but outside Hamilton County boundaries, and they pay out-of-county tuition to the Hamilton County Department of Education. That is common practice in, throughout the state of Tennessee because the funds that Suquatchee County taxpayers pay to the Suquatchee County Commission follow the student up to the county line. But if the student attends school outside Suquatchee County, the county doesn't transfer money to Hamilton County. So we charge tuition for them now and presumably would continue to do that.
The mayor has a follow-up question.
When you say $8,517, that includes towns or other contribution, that's why it's a higher than the average for the, okay.
Thank you. In the Shelby County area, after they broke away from the school system there, did they make any changes like, say, times of starting school? Was that one of their issues as well as far as, that was brought up as, a starting time was one of the concerns? Did they make any changes in their school system after?
Dr. Spalding, I don't recall hearing that from any of the superintendents. We didn't specifically ask that question, and I don't recall that any of the five superintendents mentioned anything about starting time being an issue.
The, in talking with a few teachers, one of the big things that they said that would perhaps improve a new school system would be decreasing schools' classroom sizes. Were those also reduced when they broke away in the Shelby County school systems? Were they significantly impacted?
Again, I don't recall a specific mention of reduction in the size of, the average size of classes, but there were significant changes in the curriculum that allowed for the creation of new courses, for the refocusing of courses based on the needs of the students in that school district. So that may have indirectly led to smaller size, but I don't think we got that information specifically about class size.
And also, we were doing budget item by budget item, in other words, one for one. So whatever the pupil teacher ratio is currently, we use the same pupil teacher ratio to establish our budget, just to say, to compare apples to apples and oranges with oranges. I would like, though, Amy, you may be the one to be able to tell us this, the figures that we've given, Dr. Spalding, are based on what the pupil expenditure is in Hamilton County, correct? But we've also calculated what's actually spent per pupil currently in Signal Mountain schools, do we not?
Yes, we have.
And I think it would be very appropriate to point out that although the average per pupil expenditure in Hamilton County is a certain amount, what is it on Signal Mountain?
That is actually on the tabloid format that we looked at in our.
My point is, there's less spent on Signal Mountain than the average in Hamilton County, is that correct? That was my understanding from the data that was presented to us several months ago. That's why, there's, one of the reasons that there's a surplus in the budget that we project is because the expense per student in Hamilton County versus what it is in, in the schools in Signal Mountain.
Well, I think one of the, I think what you're getting at, too, is what we looked at, we, is when we were going through the budgeting, if you take out the central office expense that is being, the per-pupil central office expense allocated to Signal Mountain students, that is where the savings comes in as far as, rather than supporting the larger county's central office, that is where the overall savings comes in with a smaller district.
Thank you. Dr. Friedel did a very good job in answering a lot of questions on the front end with his presentation. You had a response.
Just one other point on the Shelby County and the six municipalities. One of the drivers was the city of Memphis gave up their charter. The six municipalities were worried that their quality of education would go down because of the control that would happen with the city of, even though the city of Memphis gave up the charter, they had a majority of the school board members in the new combined Shelby County schools.
Thank you. Did their test scores go up as a result of breaking away? Did there, was there any follow-up information about that as far as their increase?
They did report that, if my memory serves me correctly, that test scores went up. And I thought it was interesting that was not, that, not just with the municipalities, the quality of education in all of Shelby County went up after the split. It's kind of, they talked about it as a kind of a domino effect. When you raise the bar in one area, the bar in the other areas try to keep up as well.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I have a couple of questions at this end. So Dan Landrum, I'm on the Signal Mountain Council.
Can I, can I?
You bet.
Can I butt in for a second? I want to also thank Dan because Dan put together this sound system and did a lot of work in setting us up today, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. So, as you guys have heard, and everyone on the council knows, my concerns from the beginning have been about process, about good science, and asking, not letting confirmation bias lead us astray. And I've, I attended quite a few meetings and listened to many, but not all. Also had an opportunity, and that's where I want to start. I guess the essence of my concern is that we set out to determine viability or to prove viability, and seeing how Charlie Spencer's comments were called dissents, and responded to with four pages of reply, you know, to his, to his two, and that, there were just some things that bothered me. I mean, the time was taken to do grammatical and typographical corrections within the report as it was done. That wasn't done with Charlie's, it was presented, you know, just as like, here's some quick thoughts, and here they are out. I wish it hadn't happened that way. And I think their comments, not necessarily dissents. So I had the opportunity with Dick G. and with Chris Hallie, and I believe Boyd was there, at the Tennessee Municipal League Conference to meet with Keith McDonald, the mayor of Bartlett. And I kept good notes during that and wrote down several things that he said, that these were the questions I was wanting to hear all the way through this thing. And we haven't talked about the buildings so much yet. He had some things to say about that, and that though they're not technically paying for the buildings, they're paying for the buildings. But that's another subject. But he's, and this also speaks to Charlie's. He said, "If we don't do this, Bartlett is going down the toilet." That's the way they felt, and they ran on a campaign that this needed to be done. The whole, his campaign structure was that way, the mayor. And the vice mayor also added, they had to do it, they had no choice. Their community has a 60-40 ratio for sales tax to property tax. We're quite different from that in this community. We have very little sales tactics that comes in. And another thing he mentioned was that, I think it was Chris that asked him the question, "Are you beginning to see improvements?" And he said, "Well, honestly," I believe it was three years in for them, "he said, "At three years in, we're just stabilizing, and now we're starting to try to look at what it's going to take to make things really better, to see those improvements in test scores." I mean, this is what he said, and I was there and I wrote it down. He said, "You have to realize if you do this, you have created a needful thing that there's never enough to satisfy." And so when we look at funds for like the MEF going, perhaps we eliminate them is the way we see it, there's still going to be a need for the MEF. There's still going to be a need for people to participate and to make their schools be the best they can be. So I'll ask a question now. Of the six cities you studied in Shelby County, were any of them the best in the county? Were towns similar to ours in any way? And if so, I'd like to hear a little comparison and contrast, because these six schools in Shelby County were the model for much of what we did here, correct?
Well, she's looking up some information. I'd like to answer. As far as a model, they're the only ones that have done it. So in that respect, yes, they were the model. Were we looking at it as the model to follow? Not necessarily. We just knew that those six systems were created similar to how Signal Mountain would have to create their school system. So those are the ones we went to look at. Having been essentially a lifelong educator, the test score issues, I don't, I think it'd be very difficult for any of those systems to prove that in three years they've improved their test scores. I certainly agree with the comment he made, we're still trying to, anytime you make a change of that nature, it's going to take some time for things to settle out. And I think the three years that he's talking about is probably sufficient time for things to settle out, and then for them to look at, how can we, you know, look at improving test scores?
Mr. Landrum, I'd like to respond briefly. You asked the question whether we set out to prove viability or to determine viability. When this issue first was reported in the press, probably last December, and being a lifelong educator, it piqued my curiosity. I came to the council meeting, I heard the presentation by the ad hoc committee, and I thought to myself, this would be something interesting for me. This is something that I could contribute to. I have a lot of knowledge about higher education. I thought at the time it would translate to K through 12, and the more I got into it, the more I realized that they are of a different species, and I had to go back to school and learn about K through 12 education from the beginning. But I, I can only speak for myself, I can't speak for the other six members of the committee. I entered this process very skeptical. I have, one of the areas of my expertise pales in comparison to my colleague sitting next to me, is finance. I have been treasurer of a number of organizations. I have taught business law in the accounting department at UTC. I know a fair amount about numbers. And I was very skeptical and taking a real hard look at the numbers. I didn't know if it would work, and I didn't know if it would make a difference. I did not enter this process to prove viability. I entered it to determine viability. The deeper I got into the investigation, the clearer it became to me personally that viability could be achieved and that it would improve quality. That doesn't mean that I necessarily think that we ought to just jump right in and start doing this. I still think there are some issues that need to be resolved, and in putting this report together, I tried to be objective in identifying those obstacles. But I did not enter this process with a bias. I was completely neutral and very skeptical.
Can I, can I follow up, Dan? Can you outline, I know you did in your summary, but can you impart to the council the items that you think need additional clarification? The things that we need to continue to look at, the things that continue to get feedback and study?
That's, I think that's, that's tangential to the.
I feel like that's tangential to the question, which I do want to know how their models, because it's not just the schools that we're trying to get working. The schools have to be funded by budgets that cities are putting together. And so as council members, our fiduciary responsibility is to determine whether or not Signal Mountain is going to go bankrupt doing this. I mean, and there's a, there's a lot, I have, I took, I have many questions. And so I'm just wondering how you guys compared even how those city governments operate, and are any of those cities similar to Signal Mountain, and are any of the school systems, any of the situations of the school systems of the six in Shelby County similar to our school system situation being the top in the county?
Looking back over my notes from the trip, and it was an interesting trip because we were able to talk to so many city leaders during that time. And as far as looking at a community exactly like Signal Mountain, I can't say that there was one exactly like Signal Mountain because whether, when it was this, a small school system like we were, the one that came to mind is Millington in my notes, and I remember him talking, it has a very high poverty rate, and it's a very transient community. In fact, only 40%, 40% do not finish the school year. So they have kids, so it's a very different demographic than what we are looking at. But as I was mentioning, and just with a wide paintbrush going over the, some of the big budget items, 95% of the funding comes from county and state sources. And so regardless of the size, your funding comes primarily from the county and state based on per-pupil amounts. And so, you know, we talked to Germantown, which is, would you say Germantown would?
It's a little bigger, I believe.
It is, it's bigger. It's a big, it's a bigger, but it's, but anyway, that, we, I think a lot of these probably were bigger. I think one would, I think one thing that would be similar, but this is going off of memory, was, one of the districts did not have as big of a sales tax base, and I'm thinking that that was possibly Arlington, but that's going off of memory.
There was another one that didn't qualify for size.
Oh, that was Lakeland.
But it piggybacked on to.
An adjacent district.
Right, which is either Arlington or Millington.
I think it was.
And I think that's the one that did not have the tax base.
Right.
If my memory serves.
Right. So I think that that was, that would probably be, if you're looking at communities, it would, it would probably be more, whether or not they have the tax base, so it would be looking at a more, where it would be property, property-based only, if you were trying to take your municipal contribution.
Which is what we mostly are.
Right, we are mostly a property base. We don't have the large sales tax base. But again, the primary funding comes from the county and state sources.
Additional questions, Dan? I'll wait a bit. Many of the questions we have are really going to involve the buildings, and that wasn't in there, they didn't discuss buildings. The council's going to have to do that, obviously. But want to hear from other folks as well, I'll chime in. do that, obviously. But want to hear from other folks as well. I'll, I'll chime in.
Yeah, I, Dick G., member of council. And I like pictures, so let's go to A, A4. And I just need some help understanding taxes and, and all of that. The light blue, wow. The light blue shape over there is eight, eight million dollars. That is, that quantity is determined by the state, correct?
Yes, that, the state funds are determined by the basic education.
Okay. These other smaller ones are also predetermined. I mean, they are calculated numbers that, that a district really doesn't have control over? Is that?
Okay, so the, the state funds are calculated by the BEP formula, which is based on an attendance statistic.
So that leaves, that leaves that big old blue pile over on the right there.
The, the county taxes are also calculated on a, on a pers, it's on a, the attendance statistic. It's a percent eighty-eight.
Yeah, well, here's, okay. If the county wanted to improve education by raising more money, how would it do that? What, what pile does it have control over? Can, can it expand this, this pile here?
This is, this pie is only a pie looking at a Signal Mountain, a proposed Signal Mountain school district budget for year one.
But it's proportional, right?
It is proportional. So if the county was, if the county was to increase their, their budget for the schools...
Yeah.
Then this, then this piece of pie would get bigger because it was, it's based on percentages.
So that, that's the one, that's what I'm getting at?
Yes, it is directly proportional to the county funding.
So, let's take it back to the, our size, what this is. So if, if we did establish a school district, our property taxes are funding this part of the pie, yes?
Yes, are, yes. So we, we are...
So, so...
County residents, and you, and you would continue to pay county taxes.
I understand. And that's kind of my question. If, if we get to a point where, let's, again, hypothetically, we, we establish this district, and we've taken the money that is taxed, and we, we realize the savings, and, and we're still not happy. In other words, we want, we want it better than that. How do we do that? Do we, do we have the option to do that, or are we restricted by what the county taxes? Could, could we raise property taxes to do that?
Yes, you could. And that's under the municipal contribution. By law, a municipality is...
You don't mess with the county tax?
No. You, you don't have the, that, that is mandated by law. The, the, the per pupil allocation that comes from the county and from the state are mandated by law. For the municipal contribution, there is a minimum that's mandated by law, but there is no maximum. So, I mean, that would, I mean, that, you would have that flexibility.
What I'm, what I'm struggling with is just how much, it, as an independent district, how much power would we have to raise revenue to improve the district, the, the, the school beyond the level it, it would be once it's transferred? Does that, that make sense?
That would be entirely up to the council and the residents of the town.
But what, what button would do we push?
There's no legal limit to what you can raise as far as support, funds to support...
Of the municipal contribution?
Municipal contribution is a minimum.
Okay.
You can go beyond that.
Is that shown on here? It is, okay. Sure it is, all right. So that represents the minimum contribution. And it...
All six municipalities, before they even did a referendum, they all raised their taxes. So they all wanted to have sufficient, make sure they had sufficient revenue. And like John and Amy have said, the sky's the limit. You do whatever you want to, for whatever education level you want.
They raised...
Sorry, they included it in the referendum though, right? So the folks voted on the increase, or is that...
I believe it was simultaneous, but I, I don't know the exact timing. But they, but they did it by raising their sales tax by a half cent to pay their town contribution. Rather than ra, rather than raising property taxes. And the, I believe most of the municipalities, if not all.
Through, through a referendum.
Through a referendum.
Okay. The other thing is that, John, you mentioned the, the local, interlocal agreement. And then you used the word in perpetuity with it. Is, is that really, all interlocal agreements I'm familiar with can be non-agreements with a stroke of a pen. And I wonder, and in perpetuity suggests that it's, that it's permanent. Is, do you know that for a fact, or is that...
Nothing is permanent. But an agreement between three communities to continue guaranteed enrollment would create a contractual obligation unless one of the communities withdrew.
Yeah.
But that, and then that contractual obligation would, would then be canceled for the community that had withdrawn. But if it stays in the district, then if capacity was reached, it would be the responsibility of the three communities, or whichever communities were participating in the agreement. It would be their responsibility to create a fix for the excess over capacity. But I would just point out, that's true today. If Thrasher, which is close to capacity, were to increase, to, to experience an increase in desired enrollment, HCD-E would have to figure out how to fix that. Whether, if, if Signal Mountain didn't have a municipal school district, HCD-E has the problem, and they would have to figure it out. If five years from now, the three Signal Mountain schools suddenly doubled in size, Hamilton County would have to figure out how to deal with that. So this is a problem...
I know, but that, that's easy because it's all in the same district. If, if you have an interlocal agreement that is not permanent. I mean, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know an interlocal agreement that, that can't be undone. And if you had capacity issues, I, I can think of a scenario where Signal Mountain, if this school district were created, would become a, a bit of a draw for people seeking superior education and, and public education. The capacity would increase, say, and...
And so would the revenue.
But not necessarily enough to provide space. That would require additional capital from another source, I think, I think. And where does that come, where, where does that capital come from?
I think, and I want to, I want to piggyback on this because I, I have the same, similar question. If you look at the five and 10-year budget, you're projecting a, between forty and thirty-one million dollar excess in 10 years. Now that's not all from the, the excess operating revenue, right? There are other sources in there. Where does that come from? Can you explain that?
I'll take a shot at it, and Amy can correct me. The, the projected surplus, first of all, assumes that the school board is not spending the surplus flexible, flexibility, but is banking it. So some of that surplus is not going to end up in a bank account. It's going to end up in the buildings and in the libraries and in the chairs in the school.
Clarify, when we say surplus, we're talking about the 1.2, right?
The 1.25 or the 1.9, yeah.
In the ballpark, okay.
But in addition, there would be capital funds from two sources. One is that the budget anticipates what's called a capital outlay contribution, which is essentially a deposit into a savings account to deal with things like deferred maintenance or construction. The second source of additional revenue comes from Hamilton County. Because even though a separate school district were to be established, when the county allocates funds to Hamilton County Department of Education for capital projects, it is required to allocate a pro rata portion of those funds to any other school district in the county. So, a Signal Mountain school district would receive somewhere between five and six percent of any capital outlay that would be allocated to the Hamilton County Department of Education.
Okay. So, and just to carry the hypothetical, to, to get to where I want to go, if you don't mind, the funds aren't sufficient. I mean, even with the allocation, in my, in my hypothetical question. So where does the, that falls to the municipality then to provide those funds? Yes?
Clarify something for me. The increase... The increase that you're referring to in the hypothetical situation, is student enrollment, you're saying student enrollment, correct?
It's capacity needs based on increased student enrollment.
Okay.
Yeah, you'd have to, you'd have to provide some space.
All right. And when you mentioned, a municipal system would be attractive and so forth...
Yeah.
All right, so, but they would have to move into the Signal Mountain district unless the school board opened enrollment. So see, I'm, I'm trying to figure out what, what your, your, your hypothetical situation, what enrollment increase, where's it coming from?
From growth in the town.
All right, from growth in the town.
Population growth in the town, yeah. Which, which I think is a reasonable expectation.
All right.
And actually, if, if it would be growth, I mean, all you have to do is look, take a ride out in the county. It's growing out in the county, and in Walden is. Is it growing in Walden? Not so much.
Several of the six municipalities did bond issues to build buildings, if that was your question of where...